Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,191st Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petition will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley?
Present.
Ms. DeNaro?
Present.
Mr. Bonjero?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Karen Magna votes here. Chairman Wilshaw?
Is also here. And also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina, and we have Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department, and we will introduce them as appropriate as we get into our agenda. We do have a new Planning Commissioner with us tonight, Wafa DeNaro. Welcome to the Commission. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Great. Thank you for being here. And it's gonna be a good time for you to learn how the Planning Commission works. We'll start you right in feet first, as they say. Our first item on our agenda is our petitioner is not in the audience yet, so I'm gonna give them a little bit of time to come forward. Hopefully, they'll show up by the end of our meeting, but if not, we'll proceed without them if necessary. So, we're gonna move to the miscellaneous section of our agenda, and I'm gonna ask that the Secretary start with item number two.
Item number two is Petition 2022-08-08-03 submitted by NC Designs and Contracting, Inc. requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 3.11 and 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended in connection with proposal to remodel the interior and exterior of the existing gas station. It's a Sunoco station at 274175 Mile Road located on the southwest corner of Five Mile and Inxter Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 24.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We'll go to Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the request to remodel of the gas station at the southwest corner of Five Mile and Inxter Roads. It's currently a Sunoco gas station, and it has... A gas station has existed at this location since the early 1950s, and in 1971, the station was redeveloped to what exists today. Along with the sale of gasoline, the facility currently operates in auto repair business. There are two service bays that occupy the westerly part of the building. The site measures 140 feet along Five Mile Road by 110 feet on Inxter Road for a total area of 15,400 square feet. The zoning is C2 general business. There's an existing one-story building on the property. It measures roughly 1,900 square feet. It's positioned in the southwest corner of the property. Fuel pumps are separated in two areas. There are four pumps that can accommodate eight vehicles, one on each side, located between the building and Five Mile Road, and then there's a single pump that can accommodate two vehicles which is located on the east side of the building adjacent to Inxter Road. It's only the pumps along the Five Mile Road frontage that are covered with an overhead canopy. The single pump on the east side of the building is not covered. The site is sparsely landscaped as it stands today. There are three small areas, one at each corner, as well as a small green behind the building. Four driveways provide access to the site. There are two on Five Mile and two on Inxter, and the site currently has eight parking spaces, including five spaces along the site's west property line, and then another three spaces along the south property line. The plan's proposed to eliminate the existing auto service center and convert the space for general retail purposes. This would enlarge the convenience store operations. The new floor plan shows a larger retail sales and display area with a walk-in cooler and freezer. There would be a coffee bar, a utility room, single restroom, office and cashier counter. So, gone are the auto repair operations. The enlarged convenience store is shown on this floor plan, and that would make up the interior space of the new building. On the exterior, the existing building consists mostly of brick. It has an asphalt shingled roof, and mounted on the top left side of the roof is a cupola and weather vane. All of this would be removed. The proposed remodel would replace that peak roof as well as the cupola with a flat roof. The new facade would have parapet walls at varying heights and projections, and I'll show you a color rendering which gives you a good idea of what the new building would look like. The materials would include a combination of brick as well as stone, ephes and hardy panels, which is a composite material. New windows would be added as well, and the entrance would be moved to the center of the storefront. Upon completion, the tallest part of the building would measure 27 feet in height. The ordinance limits the height to 35 feet, so it's still several feet below the maximum limit for the C2 district. For landscaping, required along Five Mile Road would be two full-size trees, one ornamental tree, and 16 shrubs. I'm going back to the site plan that shows the landscaping. And then along Inxter, the requirement is two full-size trees, one ornamental tree, and 13 shrubs. There is a submitted landscape plan that shows the added plantings along both street frontages, mostly within the public road right-of-way. In terms of parking, for gas stations, the requirement is one space for each fueling pump, so based on the number of fueling pumps, the station is required to have six parking spaces. As indicated earlier, the site plan shows eight spaces. Those would not be altered, so it meets the parking requirements. The plan does show an enclosed dumpster area in the southeast corner of the site, and this was a topic of discussion at our study session. It's been reoriented to be due north-south at this point, allowing for better access to service that dumpster. So, other than the proposed remodeling and landscaping improvements, no other site improvements are planned for the site. The parking layout, the number of driveways, and the canopy setup would all remain as is, and that's pretty much it, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, can you read out the correspondence? Yes, please.
First letter is dated August 3rd. It's from our Department of Public Works Engineering Division, and it reads, "The existing building is currently serviced by water mains, storm and sanitary sewer. The drawings do not indicate any alterations to the existing services, so we do not anticipate any issues with the proposed waiver use. It should be noted that should the owner need to modify any of the existing utilities or do any work within the Five Mile or Inxter Road right-of-way, drawings will need to be submitted to the department to determine if permits will be required from either the city of Livonia or Wayne County." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter dated August 16th coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue. They indicate they have no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated August 4th and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated August 3rd that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted: Number one, free air is not currently provided for as required per previous ZBA case 8501-9. Number two, the pavement is in disrepair and should be repaired or replaced as necessary. Three, there are no provisions for a dumpster enclosure on the site. The Commission and/or Council may wish to address this. This has already been addressed as previously noted." And then, number four, the existing brick columns shall be repaired as necessary. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next, we have a letter coming from the Department of Finance dated August 5th wherein they indicate that there are unpaid water and sewer charges in the amount of $118.59. That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated August 4th and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions from any of the Commissioners for Mr. Toramina? If not, our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward. As always, we ask that you start with your name and address for our record. Good evening, Nasser.
Good evening. My name is Nasser Shuker. Address 3241 South Tannycraft, Dearborn, 4A124.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Toramina explained enough, and I just got a couple samples if people... I mean, someone wants to know what's the composite material, ephes and the brick, so...
Okay, great. If you wanna hand those down to Ms. Reese, she will pass those along to us.
If you take them heavy?
And I don't know, Mr. Chair, if maybe he can describe what parts of the building are gonna have which materials. I'll go back to the rendering. Sure. Nasser, if you wanted to let us know which pieces are gonna go where?
So, the brown one is the one he's holding. That's the composite material. Yes, it's not wood. It looks like wood and hardy board, but it's not. So, this material, it would last for a long time with no maintenance, zero maintenance, so the material is not gonna fade in the future. Probably it would, but in a certain time. The ephes, as you know, it's a material, a stucco material, foam under. They put some mesh on it, and then they run a cement, then they paint it. Actually, they waterproof it with paint, and that material also would last as long as you don't hit or damage. That's why we put the stone columns at a height that people cannot reach the ephes. The canopy is gonna be metal, as you see on the picture, aluminum, painted black. And the brick, something like what we are presenting. Sometimes the tone is a little bit different. It depend on what's in stock in the market.
Okay.
And then we'll have a coping, and the crown on top would be ephes covered with coping, aluminum coping. The roof is gonna be refaced with a vinyl TPO material, which is not shingle or any of that. It's like a roofing material, new roofing material, and like so. And the screening, of course, in the back for the... It would match the building, whatever material we have on the building. It would screen the HVAC units that's gonna be placed, and the compressors for the coolers. The inside is gonna be really more modern look tile, the big-sized tiles, granite tops, and new coolers. Bulletproof, I guess, that is in there. That's it, I guess.
Okay. Well, let's see if we have any questions for you, and we'll go from there. Any questions for our petitioner?
Are there plans to change the asphalt?
I forgot that point. Definitely, and not change completely because that would kick in the engineering department on us. So, whatever is really bad, definitely will repair, take out and take out. Of course, they'll put a sealer. If there is asphalt there, we'll put a sealer and restart the whole parking, brand new it would be. Whatever we have concrete, if it's broken and hazard, of course, we'll take that piece out and put a new one.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Ms. DeNaro?
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Smiley?
Where are you gonna locate the free air?
The nearest parking next to the building, whichever one. On this side, I think next to the dumpster, yeah, over there, mostly, yeah. You're not gonna put it in front of the building over there. Yeah, we'll put it in that corner. And the columns, I heard the inspector saying that that's definitely, it's gonna be all stripped and rebuilt matching the building color brick.
Okay.
And my next question is, they're aware of the taxes and stuff, or the water?
Actually, probably, I mean, probably this is the bill for this month, maybe, or something. I mean, it's $118. I mean, they didn't miss probably...
Yep.
I mean, if they're missing their payment, it should be thousands.
Okay, so they're aware of it.
They're putting half a million dollars, replacing the building, so they should be okay.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bonjero?
Just construction-wise, Nasser, the shingled roof that's there, do you strip it off?
Yes.
Okay.
Completely. Because that material doesn't stick if you don't take that asphalt out.
Okay.
And then we'll put 3.5-inch insulation on it, and then we'll put the material, the TPO material on it.
Gotcha. On the section, it's showing half-inch interior gypsum board applied to the back of the parapet wall?
Half-inch?
It says, if you go to the section right there, the note at the top?
That should be dense glass or plywood.
Okay.
Whatever they... They're probably, it's a mistake, mistype.
He's got half-inch interior gypsum board?
No, no, no.
There's no way?
Definitely, 100% it's not. Either plywood, 716 OSB, or it's gonna be dense glass.
Dense glass, yeah.
Yeah, 5/8 of an inch dense glass, or OSB plywood, yeah.
I just figured that's...
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's no problem. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
Nasser, can you make us... Which of these materials that you passed out here will be on the columns in the front of the building?
None. That's a kind of material. It's a cement blocks. They come 24-inch by 4-inch thick, 16-inch high, and they're grinded.
Spoons?
It's not... It's nice and... But they do them in Grand Rapids only, and you put any color you want. I put them in about like eight gas stations now, and they look beautiful. And there is one location, if you're nearby, in Brownstown, Dexter, Nido and King. There is another one in Troy, and there is many other ones in Livonia.
Mobile? Yeah.
Livonia, where did I put some? There is one on West Road and 75, the mobile gas station. That's in Woodhaven. There is 14 and Dequender, mobile.
Okay. Thank you. It's a masonry product?
It's a masonry product. It would last better even... Why I like it, better than limestone, because limestone...
...is defined as the answer of an equation.
Limestone, it would... Sometimes the rain, or if you have an area that's dripping on it, it turns dark and black, and it looks like dirty. This material does not stain whatsoever. It's a good material.
This is quite a freshening of that building, and it looks great.
Yeah, thank you.
So, make a big addition to the corner. When do you think you'll start?
When we have permits.
So, right away?
Whenever they give us the permit, we'll start right away.
Great. Thank you.
Ten days, and we'll start.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from anybody. Is there anybody in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anybody jumping forward. Mr. Nasser, is there anything else that you would like to say before we make our decision?
Thank you.
All right.
I hope it works okay with you.
We'll see how it goes in a few minutes. Well, thank you for coming. Well, it's not a public hearing, this is a miscellaneous item, but a motion would be in order at this time. Any of our Commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Smiley?
I'll make an approving resolution.
You're gonna make a long one.
Oh, good.
Support.
You know how I look to talk. That the request to remodel the interior and exterior of the existing gas station, Sunoco, at 274175 Mile Road, is hereby approved subject to the City Council approval of the following conditions. The proposed landscape plan, site plan identified in Sheet SP 101 dated August 5th, 2022, as revised prepared by NC Designers and Contracting Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to except that the dumpster enclosure shall be reoriented to better facilitate servicing, and the plan shall be revised to show the required number of full-size trees, ornamental trees, and trees pursuant to Section 10.03 of the Livonia Vision zoning ordinance as amended. That all landscape areas shall be fully irrigated with an underground system, and any disturbed turf areas restored with sod in lieu of hydroseeding. All parking spaces except the required barrier-free parking shall be double striped at 10 feet wide and 20 feet in length as required, and the number and location of the barrier-free parking space or spaces shall be provided at the direction of the Inspection Department. The exterior building elevation identified as Sheet A202 dated August 5th, 2022, as revised prepared by NC Designers and Contracting Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to except that the four columns shown along with the north side of the building between the window panels shall consist of masonry, and the roof shall be concealed from view by the parapet walls, and the backsides of the parapet walls shall be finished with the same hardy panel on the exterior of the building. That all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of compatible character, material and color to the other exterior materials on the building. That the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of the same brick used by the construction of the building, or in the event of poured wall substituted. The wall design, texture and color shall match that of the building. The enclosure gate shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. Any new light fixtures shall not exceed a height of 20 feet from the grate at the base of the light and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across the property lines or in adjacent roadways. No outside storage, placement or display of merchandise shall be permitted. Pursuant to Section 6.2611, free air shall be provided and dispensed at the point of the service without having to enter the station or perform any extra action to obtain air without charge. Vacuum equipment or outdoor placement or storage of propane cylinder storage units is not allowed. The sale of ice shall be restricted to the inside of the building. Only conforming signs are approved as part of the petition, and any additional signs shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the ZBA Zoning Board of Appeals. No part of the pump, island, canopy, fascia, except for signage, shall be illuminated, and no LED light band or exposed neon is allowed on any part of the building, including and around the windows or on the overhead canopies. Unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motors shall be prohibited. The specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for, and pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Mr. Ventura, I think pre...
Still gonna support.
Pre-supported, so, all right. Very good. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve from any of our Commissioners? If not, if our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. DeNaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wilshaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes, and we'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
And with that, we are now going to rewind here slightly back to the public hearing section of our agenda. Our petitioner is in the audience, so, Mr. Secretary, if you wanna read that item number one?
Item number one, Petition 2022-07-02-18 submitted by BBS Distilleries LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.09 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended to expand the existing small distiller license, which is a manufacturer of no more than 60,000 gallons of spirits a year, to include an outdoor seating area and amend Council Resolution Number 354-21 to expand the hours of operation in connection with operation of a distillery and tasting room at 27,600 Schoolcraft Road located on the north side of Schoolcraft between Inxter Road and Cardwell Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 24.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This is a request by BBS Distilleries to expand the existing on-premise liquor license to include an outdoor seating area, as well as amend Council Resolution Number 354-21 in order to expand the hours of operation for the tasting room. So, BBS occupies a unit located in the Buckingham Village Shopping Center. This is generally located at the northwest corner of Inxter and Schoolcraft Roads. The unit is roughly 2,800 square feet in size. It was on December 1st of last year that BBS was granted waiver use to open a small distillery and tasting room. BBS was approved subject to a maximum of 40 customer seats inside the tasting room. The proposed outdoor seating area would be established adjacent to the BBS storefront along the existing sidewalk. The patio would extend roughly five feet out from the storefront, leaving the remaining four or five feet of sidewalk available for pedestrians. As you can see from this drawing, the outdoor patio area would accommodate seating for approximately six people. It shows three small tables, as well as chairs on either side of those tables. There is a enclosure shown. It would be a four-foot-high decorative fence. The fence would be... Or the patio would be accessible via a separate doorway that would be installed inside the tasting room. So, one of the requirements that we have, anytime there is a outdoor patio where alcoholic beverages are served, we require that access be limited to within the restaurant facility, hence the reason why this door would have to be added to the front of the storefront. Access and parking are shared between the multiple parcels and tenants that make up the overall shopping complex. The overall parking at the center is adequate to accommodate the additional six customer seats. Also requested as part of this petition, petitioner is seeking to extend its business hours. As set forth in the Council Resolution, the hours for public entry are currently limited from noon to 10:00 p.m. on Sundays through Thursdays, and from noon to 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. The change would extend the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, and then from noon to 2:00 a.m. on Sundays. No other changes or improvements, including to the elevations of the building or the landscaping proposed with this petition. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, can you read out the correspondence?
Yes, please.
We have a number of items. First is from our Engineering Division. They indicate that, well, the letter's dated August 16th, and it reads, "The existing parcel is currently served by public water mains, sanitary sewer and storm sewer, and no alterations to the existing services are planned. Thus, we do not believe there will be any impacts to the existing systems." That letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter dated August 16th from the Fire Marshal, and it reads, "This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the request to construct a commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. See attached Petition 2021-10-02-20 dated October 25th. Stipulations shall apply. Patio gate needs to meet ADA requirements for egress. Single action to open for emergency egress. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter coming from the Division of Police dated August 15th that reads, "I have concerns with the safety of the public. I do not think that the fence offers an adequate barrier for the protection of patrons that may be seated so closely to the parking lot and vehicular traffic. Furthermore, the sidewalk would be impeded by the fence and not allow very much room for people to safely walk along the front of the business between the establishment and the parking lot." That letter is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next, we have a letter from the Inspection Department dated August 15th that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, an accessible route must be maintained between the proposed fencing and the parking lot. A clear width of 36 inches must be maintained on the sidewalk. Number two, the additional front door that is proposed must meet current Michigan barrier-free requirements. If installed, this would be a minimum depth of 54 inches out from the door and 24 inches free from any obstructions on the latch side of the door. This department has no further objections to this petition." That's signed by Jerome Hannah.
That's signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated August fifteenth and signed by Connie Complula, Chief Accountant. Similar letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasure dated August fifteenth and signed by Linda Sheal, Treasure. And then lastly, a letter from the Division of Police dated August twenty-third, and it reads, "After conferring with the chief of police, we have identified the following issues for consideration. We have concerns with the close proximity to the residential environment directly west and north of the proposed site. Also, concerning expanding the hours of operation, Snooker's Pool and Pub directly next door at two seven six three zero Schoolcraft operates Sunday to Thursday, eleven AM to twelve AM, Friday and Saturday, eleven AM to two AM, and Sunday, twelve PM to twelve AM. We ask that city council give significant consideration for approval or denial if this waiver use, of this waiver use request." And that letter is signed by Jeff Ronaine, Special Services Bureau. And that is the extended correspondence. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Mark, I've seen one of the comments regarding protection ballots from the, from the parking lot. Is that needed or not needed for this type of patio or outdoor, outdoor seating?
Well, that's discretionary. It's not required by code. What is required is to maintain at least thirty-six inches of travel distance on the sidewalk between the enclosure gate, enclosure fence and the traveled portion of the parking lot. So this area right here has to be at least thirty-six inches in depth. That was what was referred to by the inspection department.
Now, we talked last week about these, these not just being bolted to the ground, these, these, these fence posts not being bolted to the ground, but actually cemented into the ground for, to have some, some level of strength.
Yeah, I recall that was brought up at the study session. The petitioner indicated that there would be some permanent attachment to the cement, how that was going to occur, though. I don't think, we, we don't have those details, so we don't know if it's, if it's bolts driven into the sidewalk or whether or not there's some, you know, deeper penetration of the post into that, into that cement.
Okay, maybe we get that answer from, from the petitioner. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions for our petition, or, excuse me, for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Von Gerald.
For Mark, Mark, on the, on the floor plan, he's showing five feet from the new gate fence to the edge of the sidewalk, and I think they're referencing three feet in there.
So this came up, the, the Director of Inspection visually inspected the area, did not measure it, but believes that it's something less than ten feet. So this would indicate that there's ten feet between the storefront and the parking lot. If it's anything less than that, then he, he has a couple feet to play with here, since the requirement is thirty-six inches or three feet.
Yeah.
You know, as long as it's not less than eight feet, he could still have the five-foot patio with three feet of clearance.
Well, it's showing he's got ten feet to work with, right?
And I, but we don't, we believe it's something less than that, probably closer to eight or nine feet.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Von Gerald. Any other questions for planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
Thank you. Mark, can you, can you clarify Mr. Ronaine's letter? Is he asking, or is he suggesting that we approve hours that are similar to Snooker's? Is that what the gist of that was?
You know, that's a good question. I did speak with Mr. Ronaine about this. I think some of the concern there is the late hours of both establishments and how those, and how, you know, what that interaction would be between the two locales. I think we heard from the petitioner last week, a desire to stay open even later than two AM to be able to, to serve food. So while the MLCC, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, may require that certain precautions be taken as far as the alcohol that being locked, there's nothing that would necessarily prevent him from, you know, staying open even later than two AM unless it's limited by virtue of the waiver approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for planning staff? Mark, one, one question about the, about the fencing. There was a letter from the fire department indicating need for a gate, and I believe we talked at the study meeting that a gate is not necessary in this situation? According to the inspection department, due to the capacity, it's not required to, to have that emergency gate. Okay, so those comments wouldn't necessarily apply. That is correct. Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure that we clarify that. Thank you. If there's no other questions for our planning staff, our petitioner is in the audience. Good evening, sir.
Excuse me?
Was just asking you start with your name and address for our record, and we'll ask some questions for you.
Jason Mitchell, nine nine one nine Merriman Road, Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. And anything that you'd like to start with before we start asking questions? Any information you want to provide?
I think pretty much provided everything. I know on the fencing, they are, with Paramount, their, our plans are to core down and put concrete in, not to just, you know, anchor it to the concrete. I've done that as a contractor over the years, and it's fine for like a little hand thing, but for something like this, someone's going to end up pushing over, end up leaning on it, and it's going to fall, and someone's going to get hurt. So we're going to go core it in no matter what.
Okay, good. Thank you for addressing that. That was one of our, our questions for you right away, so. Is there any questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? Ms. Smiley?
I guess I'm still confused. Is, is there thirty-six inches from the edge of your?
Yeah, we went back and measured. It's like, it's just over nine feet. I thought it was ten, I thought it was a standard five foot, five foot thing, but it's just shy of ten there. But we do have enough to have that three foot. We have plenty.
And the people are primarily, you were talking smokers mostly, they're going out there.
Yeah.
Instead of being out in front of the place smoking, you want them behind the gate smoking. Is that basically?
Yeah, it, it's that way they can be behind there. They can, you know, if they want to take their drinks out, because that's one of the problems that we have is policing people so they don't leave with drinks. So we want to make sure that we can facilitate that, and then on top of that, when you have a group of people standing outside your door smoking, it doesn't look as nice as having a group enjoying their time in front of your storefront there.
Away from the door, okay.
Yeah.
Good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Ms. Smiley, any other questions for our, our petitioner? Covered everything pretty well, I guess.
You know, I-
Ms. Smiley, go ahead.
About your hours of operation, you want to talk about them a little bit? Why, why you want to expand so much? Or what your plan is with the expansion of hours?
We've just had a, a lot of people in the community come to us wanting expanded hours. You know, with the factories being here, there's a lot of shift workers that get off at night. They don't have anything to go to. They go to McDonald's to eat, and, you know, where they come in for us on lunch and stuff, they'd like to come back in the evening and grab food, not necessarily stay, but at least grab it and go. And that's kind of what we were looking at, is kind of like going more of a to-go food after, you know, closing time, so to speak. People that are there, of course, can finish up whatever, and if they're still doing their karaoke or, you know, eating, then they can finish, then move along. And then the morning, again, we'd get more, more people pushing for that. And with the food, we've been pretty successful with it. We changed up a lot of our menu. Now we're offering better things, like we've got brisket, corned beef, you know, smoked chicken, higher-end stuff, and people are really liking that now, so we like to keep offering it. And then for the hours extending past the ten, eleven o'clock at night, what we're running into is like we have events that go on, and most people, by the time they get home and everything, it's about eight o'clock is the time that you can get out to relax and do things. And that gives us two hours to do an event. Like if we're doing a quiz show or something like that, two hours is like the bare minimum, so we end up always worried about extending past our times. And, you know, we have extended past, but we really haven't had any problems with people. And actually, the area seems to be getting a little nicer where we're able to get a lot of professionals coming in the area now. And that, yeah, Snooker's is also, has been kind of going a little better, too. So we're, we're happy, and we like to kind of help keep it going.
I understand the police department has not had any problems with your facility. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we had one incident with a guy. He was walking by. We had to call EMS. He had some issues or something, and they took him to St. Mary's. He's fine. He's actually our, one of our cooks now.
Oh.
Yeah, it just happened that, you know, we, we saved his life-
So you kind of captured him?
And it, it worked out that, you know, he's happy and getting moving forward in his life now.
He wasn't one of your clients, so you said he's walking by?
Yeah, he, he was resident at one of the hotels locally there, and he was walking by, and he wasn't doing so well and stuff, so we sat him down. We actually brought him in, sat him down, and got the EMS there and everything, got him assistance. He was being non-responsive.
Okay, you were also telling us about some community outreach you're doing.
Yes, we're trying to do a lot of community outreach, actually, because we feel that we need to be a part of the community. We're here for the community. Right now, we're working with Last Day Dog Rescue. We are producing a vodka for them. It's going to be Last Day Vodka. Portion of the sales goes towards them for their donations, and for the release party, we are doing a event at Ford Field here in Livonia. It's going to be October fifteenth, at which they'll have a tasting event, and then there'll be some music, food, stuff like that, entertainment, and also a chance for the people to see some of the dogs that are available for adoption. And allows the adoption place, you know, bring more people in and get them, because right now, they're, after COVID and everything, they're having a hard time finding homes for all these, and they're trying to save the ones that are being put in the pounds, and no one wants them, so they're getting euthanized for no reason. And that's their priority, is saving those ones.
And those bottles is going to be called Last Day Vodka?
Yep. Because they're Last Day Dog Rescue.
I don't know, it sounds like your last, I don't know. This is your last day, have some vodka. At any rate, no, thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I appreciate what you're doing.
We're trying.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Mitchel, so you started out as, as a distillery, as I recall, and, and that was really going to be your main line, and so now you've kind of segwayed into having food. At the end of the day, if we, if we go along with these hours that you're asking for, what do you anticipate the percentage of sales will be between liquor and food?
Honestly, with the tasting room, we're probably going to see the food sales surpass the liquor. I mean, the overall distillery, of course, is, liquor's going to be the main sale overall. But the food would be, you know, with the, the tasting room, in that, that particular setting, the food's probably going to be the more prevalent money maker.
So when you say that the liquor will be the over, the greater seller, but that's, that's packaged liquor to go?
Yeah, the, the package that's going to the retail locations.
Consumed on-site, you're going to sell more food than-
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Again, you know, it's, it's more of a tasting room. It's not like we want people to, you know, become inebriated. We're not looking for that, because what's the point in drinking a good product if, you know, you're just going to that point?
Got it.
Go, you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Sure, I, I've got some questions about your karaoke and your entertainment. What, how often? What, what kind of hours for that? How long does that go?
Right now, we are set up with the karaoke. We are kind of turned into a karaoke, karaoke box type thing where the, you know, the surround, you can be, it's all immersive, there's eight mics. That we pretty much do all day long. Whenever people come in, they want to do it, we can just turn it on and let it run and, you know, be there. In the evenings, we get more of that, of course. We actually have a DJ that comes in about five days a week now that can handle that way we handle the rest of stuff. And then on top of that, we do quiz nights. We actually just started a open mic night on Friday, and we've been getting a lot of local talent come in that's looking for things, and it's actually helping us, because at the Ford Field fundraiser with Last Day, we're looking for entertainment, and those people are now helping out with that, too. And it's a lot of the local community that's been coming out to us. We actually had a guy in there playing bongos last Friday from the backside of us there. He was an elderly gentleman.
So how, how late does that go typically during the, during the operating hours?
I mean-
How late will it go, I guess?
I, I mean, we'd like to go as long, you know, as people want to be there, I guess. You know, you know, usually like one o'clock, two o'clock time, you know, it starts, people are going home for work and stuff on the weekdays, but on the weekend, of course, it's probably going to run longer.
You know, the, the reason I'm asking them questions, I think it's good that you have some, some, some activity, entertainment, but, you know, as, as you move potentially further down the road with this hangar door and the door potentially open, I, I'd have to think that that noise, entertainment-
Yeah.
Would have to, would have to stop by eleven o'clock at night, because you can't have-
Right, yeah.
I can't envision someone singing and carrying on with, with neighbors not terribly far away.
Right, that would be inside.
But if the door, if the door-
The door would be closed in the evenings. Yeah, we wouldn't be-
Door closed at a certain time.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd have to be restriction on that.
I think, I think eleven is the noise here, so that would be probably eleven that, that would get closed down.
And then the last question I've got for you is, you told us at the study session that you're going to make some changes inside, in the back, and do some educational-
Yeah, be able to do the, the training and everything back there.
Yeah, tell us about that real fast.
Well, the, the, the whole idea about the, the sessions with the training would be a, you know, it's still kind of in the prototype phase here, but there'd be like three sessions. One, you would come in, learn all the basics, learn all the safety before you do anything, kind of get an idea of what you want to do, and then you would come back in to do your mash and your fermentation. At that point, you would pick one of our recipes that we are allowed to produce. Ferment out, then we would watch it over the next few days. You would come back in another time, and we have like mini stills that we can get, and you would actually distill on a mini still to get your own product, and then be able to take those bottles home with you at the end of the class.
That's good. I, I gotta say, I, I, you know, from, from your initial distilling project to what this is starting to become, has got four, five, six phases to it. I, I gotta say, I kind of like it.
Yeah, we're trying to do a lot more, and honestly, with the way that the people have been coming to us and liking what we're doing, they, they like more of it. And honestly, I'd like to get something larger going in the future with more entertainment. We're actually to the point now, we've got people coming in from other states, Kentucky. We have had two couples come in from Thailand to try our stuff, and the state is looking at making us a tourist attraction, listing us one as well.
Good for you. Thank you.
Any other questions for our petitioner? If there's no other questions, I, I do have one that I want to ask you, Mr. Mitchell. This is maybe a little bit of a tricky question, but in regards to using the patio for smoking, my understanding of the Michigan law is that for restaurants and bars, those types of operations, the patio area is generally not allowed to have people smoking in those areas. Are you aware of the actual details of the law?
That is true. Yes, that is, that is absolutely true, as long as we are serving food to those areas. If we are no longer doing food service to those areas, we are allowed to have patrons smoke there.
Okay, so a person can go out and use the patio for that?
They can take their food and drink and go out there, but we can't go out and serve them there.
Okay.
So they'd have to come back in to refresh their drink or anything like that.
Okay.
That's kind of the idea. We don't want people actually sitting out there all day long.
Sure.
Which is kind of a-
Okay, good. I just didn't want you to want to follow the state law in regards to the smoking.
We're, we're trying to follow it all. There's, there's a lot, we're learning a lot. It's like everywhere at once right now, because it's like, yeah, I didn't, I didn't expect to expand and get this type of group to push as long, so to speak.
Well, I, I do want to say, I do appreciate your entrepreneurial spirit. You, you certainly are one of the more unique petitioners we've had in a long time, and you, you have a pretty creative business, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I did also want to mention that, as we talked about the hangar door concept, which is not part of your petition for tonight's agenda, what we try to do in terms of accommodating your requests, that you don't have to pay to whole, start a whole process over again, is we're going to try to incorporate that into the resolution tonight, so that there will be a callback on it.
If, if you want to do that in the future, you'll be able to come back and not have to start the whole process over again for another modification. So we're trying to accommodate that and make it a little bit easier for you.
Thank you.
So just want you to be aware of that, because sometimes these procedural things get lost in the, in the weeds, so. With that, if there's no other questions for our petitioner from the commission, I will ask if there's anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against. I don't see anybody else in their audience who wishes to speak for or against this item, but it is a public hearing, so we need to make sure we do that. For you, Mr. Mitchell, you'll have the last word. Is there anything else you'd like to say before we make our decision?
I'm just ecstatic to be here and happy that you guys embrace us, the community's embracing us, and we just want to do something good to anchor that area in.
All right, well, thank you for, thank you for coming this evening, and I'm going to go to my colleagues on the commission and look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Caremagna.
The, make the approving resolution that the request to expand the existing on-premises liquor, liquor license to include an outdoor seating area and amend the Council Resolution Number three five four dash two one to expand the hours of operation in connection with the serving of alcohol at two seven six zero zero Schoolcraft Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval in the following conditions. Number one, that the sidewalk in front of the patio maintain an unobstructed width of at least thirty-six inches as measured between the edge of the parking lot, drive aisle and the fence. Number two, that the number of outdoor patio seats shall not exceed six. Number three, that the outdoor patio area be, be fully enclosed with decorative fencing as shown on the submitted plans and be accessible directly from the distillery by a doorway with, within the patio, patio enclosure. Number four, that no advertising shall be permitted on any of the seating or table apparatus of the door and patio area. Number five, that the hours of operation for the public entering to the facility, including the tasting room, patio and any other retail operations shall be limited from seven A.M. to two A.M. Monday through Saturday and from noon to two A.M. on Sundays in accordance with the MLCC. Number six, that this petition may be modified at a future date to include a bifold or similar hanger door for the front of the restaurant upon submission of plans and approval by the Planning Commission. Number seven, that all other conditions imposed by the Council Resolution Number three five four dash two one, which granted approval to utilize a small distiller, distiller license in connection with the operation of a distillery and tasting room shall remain in effect to the extent that they are not in conflict with the foregoing conditions. And number eight, pursuant to Section one three point one three of the Livonia Vision twenty-one zoning ordinance, this approval is valid, valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless a building permit obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Caremagna, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Is there any discussion in the motion? I don't see any discussion. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Caremagna votes aye. Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Ms. Smiley?
Aye.
Ms. DeNaro?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Votes aye and motion passes. We'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck with your project. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And we have one item left on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
That is number three, the approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and ninetieth public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on August ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
All members of the commission, with the exception of Mr. DeNaro, were present. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Harold.
Oh, good, Dave, I've talked enough tonight.
Who, who is it?
Dave.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We'll give it to Mr. Bonjero and supported by Ms. Smiley.